Well, we're right at six P M. So with that, I will go ahead and call the. I will go ahead and call the June twentieth twenty twenty-three meeting West Richardson City Council to order at six P M. And before we get started, Amy, if you'd please read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll. Appreciate it.
Hey, tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone, only press asterisk star to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, Brent, Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom? Fred Brink? Yep. He's muted again.
We'll probably have to unmute him, Amy.
Yep.
Present.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart? And Ken Stoker?
Here.
Councilman Bloom is asked to excuse this evening. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Bloom?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Councilmember Stoker, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening? Alrighty, well, we will pretend the flag is right there. I don't know where it went.
Ken's got.
Oh, it's a Ken's tie. Alrighty, there we go.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's a burst. Oh, carpet cleaners, that's. Okay, well, we'll get them out for next. Go ahead. Thank you, Councilman Stoker, for wearing our Stars of Stripes this evening. We honor not only you, but our country as well.
Well, it is July, so.
It is. It is that time of the year, and it's so appropriate to have you as our, as our pledge of allegiance and leader this evening. Council, the agenda is before you. Do you have any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Uh, no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the payment of the bills. Prove the minutes of the regular meeting of June twentieth twenty twenty-three. Resolution forty-five twenty-three, setting a public hearing date for amending the water use efficiency goals. Resolution forty-six twenty-three, amending the master fee schedule. The Heights Park Pavilion Reservation Fee. Resolution forty-seven twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to sign a security and improvement agreement. Resolution forty-eight twenty-three, authorizing surplus of handguns. Ordinance fourteen twenty-three, amending West Richardson Municipal Code, Chapter nine point oh five. Motion approving the final plat of Red Mountain Multi-Use Phase One. Motion authorizing submission of the R C O grant applications. Motion authorizing submission of the T I B grant application. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number Two to Engineering Services Contract for Sewer System Plan Update with J U V. Motion to authorize reimbursement to developer for upsizing the water main parcel one dash zero one nine seven dash three hundred dash zero 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 seven dash zero zero zero. Motion to reappoint Civil Service Board Member R Light. And a motion to award police facility storage building. Is there anyone from the audience this evening that would like to speak to the consent agenda? I see no one in person, and I see no one by way of virtual. Amy, do you see anyone virtually?
No, I do not.
Seeing no one, council, may I have a motion to approve?
Move to.
Uh, I move to approve this consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. And then this is our first opportunity for citizen public comment for items not on the agenda. Again, I see no one in person or anyone virtually. Amy, is there anyone has joined us virtually?
Uh, no, there is not.
Seeing no one, no citizen public comment for the first opportunity. So we'll go ahead and move on to items eight A and B, our public hearing, and a resolution to approve amendment to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand, excuse me, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight six-year transportation improvement program. With that, I'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade to present his staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what you have before you is a proposed amendment to the twenty-three twenty-eight six-year transportation improvement uh, program that was adopted by council last year in June of twenty twenty-two, uh, following a public hearing. As circumstances change, the program can be amended by council, um, following a public hearing. Uh, the amendment that we're proposing deals with our Keen Road Pathway Project Phase Four. It received, uh, federal funding for uh, design and construction. And as we started into the design, we realized that there is some, uh, we can't catch the slopes in some of the areas of the pathway, so there's some right away acquisition that's needed. And to be able to do that, we need to go amend our tip, take it through the program. And basically, it's going to allocate seventy thousand dollars at a construction money for right away acquisition. We'll be seventy thousand dollars short, but, uh, there's no ask for that at this time. We're going to finish the design, get to, see what we're. Is it not?
There you go. You're wearing out the button. We'll have to get you doing.
Actually wasn't pushing the right spot, so I, what did you? So I don't know how much they caught. Basically, it's amendment to add a right away phase to acquire some. We can't catch the pathway slopes. Um, and so there could be a, uh, impact on funding, but for right now, this keeps the project moving forward with this amendment.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six oh eight. Again, we have nobody present in the chambers this evening, and I see no one virtually. Amy, has anybody joined us virtually?
No, they have not.
And then we will go ahead and close that public hearing at six oh eight. And, uh, council, is there anyone that would like to make comment this evening? Uh, Councilmember Smart? Let's have him. Let's go with the motion. There we go. Get on the table.
I moved to pass Resolution forty-nine dash twenty-three, amending the city's twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight six-year transportation improvement program.
Second.
Second, Councilman Smart?
Uh, yes, Roscoe, are there any, um, is there any, uh, impact or adversity with obtaining the easements that you're talking about to residents or other owners?
Uh, this project will only affect one. It's, it's the farm fields you see further to the west on Keen Road. Um, and so they looked at trying to include, uh, small retaining walls and other things to stay out of the field. And it'll end up being a combination of reasonable, uh, probably four foot retaining walls and, but we're still going to need some slope easements. I don't think we actually need right away. It's just the old railroad grade on that section, uh, as you get closer to cooperative way is where we're going to need it.
So it's an amicable, uh, agreement for the most part, uh? Just curious if there's any.
It, it's a federal process, uh, with federal money in it, so it's a long drawn out, and that's where the cost is so high. If it was local money, I would go knock on the door and we'd be done in five minutes with a slope easement, but, uh, the, the federal funds make a drawn out process, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up for eight C, we have an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget, and we'll have Finance Director Aaron Gwynn as presenter staff for this evening, Aaron.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. This evening, I'm presenting the fourth budget amendment for twenty-three twenty-four biennium. Uh, there are several items in this amendment primarily within the general fund and one in the street fund one oh one and one in the criminal justice fund one oh five. Uh, first is recognizing revenue the city will be receiving from the Richland School District uh, for an agreement authorized by council on May sixteenth of this year for fifty percent of the school resource officer's salary and benefits. Uh, this equates to approximately a hundred and ten thousand for the remainder of twenty twenty-three and all of twenty twenty-four. Uh, next, this amendment appropriates additional funds, uh, in the general fund as follows. Uh, fifty thousand dollars to the police department for temporary code enforcement help. Uh, fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for legal services per the proposed new contract in items eight D and eight E. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars to reconfigure the municipal services facilities I T room to have an isolated cooling system rather than integrated with the entire facility. Uh, so in the event of a power outage, our, uh, mobile generator will just, um, power that room and it can remain running. Uh, two hundred thousand to transfer out to the street fund to modify the streetlights for a Rome retrofit project. Uh, the total additional appropriations for the general fund, uh, is three hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, with a hundred and ten thousand coming in as additional revenue, leaving two hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred dollars to reduce the ending fund general balance, or the ending balance of the general fund. Uh, which then balance at the end of the biennium is projected to be three million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred and five dollars. For the street fund one oh one, uh, this amendment recognizes two hundred thousand dollars transfer in from the, uh, general fund and appropriates the same amount for that streetlight retrofit project. The balance will remain the same in the gen, in the street fund. Uh, for the criminal justice fund one oh five, this amendment appropriates an additional twelve thousand seven hundred dollars from the ending fund balance for legal services for the proposed new contracts in items eight D and eight E. This amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty-three twenty-four appropriations in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars and recognizes an increase in the total resources in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, bringing the total revised budget to a hundred and thirty-six million five hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Staff is recommending passing the ordinance.
Uh, again, anyone like to comment on this item today this evening? I see nobody virtually or in the audience. Amy, has anybody joined us virtually?
No, they have not.
That move on to a motion, please.
I moved past ordinance fifteen dash twenty-three, amending the city of West Richland twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget.
Second.
Motion in a second. Council, do you have any other questions that haven't been previously addressed by Aaron this evening? Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yeah, I just was, oh, sorry. Uh, Roscoe, I think this one might be for you. Can you describe the, the Rome street light work? I, I'm not sure what Rome is. Thank.
So that's the cool part of the street light now. Um, so that's the adaptive controls, the nodes that are on top of it that allow us to uh, dim the lights, see if a, a light is pulling more voltage than it should. It also is part of the net metering, so we're only paying for the power that we're using. And, uh, Rome has decided that they're no longer going to be in that business. And so last year, they said, uh, it'll be transitioning out over the next several years. And less than six months later, they said, no, we're pulling the plug. And so we had to switch our software over as a Band-Aid to run the old system. Um, and then the engineers went through and, and found a replacement company, changed our standards. So all the new subdivisions are putting in the new, but now we've got fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred nodes that need to be switched out. It's new technology. It's, it's computer stuff, so unfortunately, um, instead of using these little nodes that have a mesh system that talk to each other until they get to a gateway and the gateway sends the information out. Now all these things are, I think it's cellphone technology, like modems. Um, and so, anyway, so we're stuck, uh, upgrading it. And so the money this will start, our basically, our crew will be doing it. Um, and this gets them started this year, and I think it's, this gets us a little more than half of the nodes that we need, um, to complete to the switch over to the new system.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we're, we should be expected, we were expecting to have this happen again. Uh, right, to finish the second half.
Yeah, there'll be a additional ask. It should be in the staff report that it's, this will get us started, and so we'll see where we're at at the end of this year, see if there's some general fund carryover that we use to finish it. Otherwise, we'll be a request in the twenty-five twenty-six budget.
Thank you.
Earlier, we had a discussion within staff as far as pulling the trigger based on carryover that we had from, from the last budget cycle. Uh, being conservative, not needing it all right now, we wanted to make sure that we, we held on to our cash where we could, but we still also move forward with the project to get to a point of where we can get to a completion. So that's the reason we're taking it in, in a step phased motion.
Thank you. And I had one other quick question on the legal services. Is the fifty-eight thousand two hundred, uh, if I, if I read the information right, that's over, that's spread out over a course of years of the contract. How many years of the contract is that?
No, that covers the twenty-three twenty-four, um, portion.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, and so is that additional amount? Uh, that's going to be applied to each, each future contract here is the idea, but.
So, yeah, the, there, the next items, we'll discuss that, um.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, sorry. That's good. Thanks.
We just need, we need to make sure we do a budget amendment prior to authorizing expenditures, so.
Right.
Get you caught up, but it's all, it's all good.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I was just wondering, um, with the uh, the temporary code enforcement officer chief, I was wondering if that's something where it sounds like with everything going on, uh, our officer, our A C O is going to be focusing more on animal control, or I'm just curious as to.
Yeah, she has for about, I'm gonna say five or six months. I've deflected, um, a lot of the code enforcement issues that are being reported to the patrol to handle, um, and assist with her because she's been, she has been overwhelmed with animal control. Um, and to balance that world out better. However, I'm looking for the proactive code enforcement to go after some of the issues that we know that are going on in the city to make progress in the city.
Excellent. Thank you. I know that there's been a lot of folks talking about wanting to have more proactive, so I appreciate us being proactive in that. Thank you very much, chief. I'm wondering, do we know about how long this is going to pay for a temporary code enforcement officer?
I can't really speak for the budget for the future years, but I'll just say this. I think the intent is if we're getting that money for the S R O from the school, that'll help pay for this position. Am I, and if it continues, it should be okay?
We're not having to expend the general fund money for the officer. The, uh, the school district's taking care of that, so we can reallocate the general fund money and the avenue that is definitely a necessity.
Okay, so then is it something that would be like full time through the end of this budget cycle or part time?
No, it's gonna be part time, part time.
Okay, thank you.
Baby steps. All right. Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. With that, moving on to item eight E is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for civil legal services, and again, we'll have Aaron present staff report this evening.
All right, uh, thank you, council. Before you is a new contract for the civil legal services, uh, with Rio Foltz. Uh, this contract replaces the contract entered into on March sixth twenty twelve with Bell Brown Rio. Uh, in March of twenty-three, our Brunson Brown left his position as city of West Richland's attorney, and we now have Jessica Foltz that took his place. Uh, the fees charged in the March, uh, twenty twelve agreement have not changed since they were established. Uh, the mayor and I have met with Rio Foltz for a few times over the last few months to negotiate a new contract for, uh, legal services. The proposed agreement has terms that will meet, uh, the city's needs as well as, uh, Rio Foltz. Um, the two sections in this agreement that primarily changed are section three and four. Uh, section three makes this a five-year contract, um, where in the old one it was, uh, a one-year contract. Um, the other significant change in this contract is the, the fee. It's a flat amount, uh, monthly fee rather than an hourly fee, which is currently a hundred dollars per hour. Um, just looking historically over the past, uh, few years, it was averaging about two thousand five hundred a month, but it, it did vary because it was based on, uh, hours, which, um, in this contract, uh, the flat rate, uh, is proposed as follows to escalate and get us kind of caught up to where we, the market should be, but not hit us all at once. Um, it'd be three thousand dollars a month, uh, for August through December. Uh, twenty twenty-four would be thirty-six hundred, twenty twenty-five would be four thousand three hundred and twenty, twenty twenty-six, five thousand one hundred eighty-four. These are all per month. Uh, twenty twenty-seven, five thousand six hundred and twenty-eight, and twenty twenty-eight would be five thousand nine hundred, five thousand seven hundred nine, five thousand seven hundred ninety-seven. Uh, from there, the rate, uh, if we continue on the contract, the rate will do a three percent escalation every year after that. Uh, staff recommends, uh, entering into the new agreement.
Thank you, Aaron. And again, we have no one in the audience this evening or anyone virtually. Has anybody joined us virtually that you see, Amy?
No, they have not.
Seeing none, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize mayor to execute a contract with Rio Foltz P L L C for civil legal services.
Motion in second, council. Any questions not previously addressed in the staff report from Aaron? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's okay. I appreciate it. Um, I, I looked through the contract. There is no cap on the number of hours that we can, uh, request services. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. You've been so quiet this evening. I'm, I'm sorry. I missed you there. It's a long, long distance to Florida.
It's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just, I was looking through earlier and tried to look through again to see it just in case I missed it, but I'm wondering, is there anything specifically that states since it's gone from hourly to just a monthly flat fee? Is there something that states, um, the way to talk to, uh, the attorney? Is that something that is solely through the mayor? Is that something where if we have a question, we would be able to contact you if it was a small thing? I'm just curious, because it normally isn't in the.
Any of our legal counsel will go through either myself or the clerk in, in regards to anything count or stat or council may have a question.
Okay, a, and that is in the contract, right?
It's just, uh, it's not listed in the contract per se. That is what our policy would be as far as proper protocol.
Okay, thank you.
Else? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And then moving on to the A E is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for prosecution's legal services. And Aaron, you have a staff report, please?
Okay, this is very similar to the, uh, civil, except dealing with prosecution. Uh, the contract it's replacing was entered into on November second, two thousand ten. Again, the fees haven't changed since twenty ten. Um, and we went through the same process as we did with the previous one. Uh, again, section three just changed from, uh, five year to a one year. And then the rates changed from three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, which is what the current flat rate is to, uh, four thousand six hundred and fifty for the remainder of this year, five thousand five hundred and eighty per month for twenty twenty-four. Uh, six thousand, uh, three hundred and sixty-five for twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, and six thousand five hundred and fifty-six per month for twenty twenty-six, six thousand seven hundred and fifty-three per month for twenty twenty-seven, six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five per month for twenty twenty-eight, and then to escalate three percent every year, the contract continues after that. And again, staff recommends approving or authorizing the new, new agreement.
Again, no one virtually, personally here in the chambers, and I see no one virtually. Has anybody joined us virtually?
No, they have not.
No, and council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize mayor to execute a contract with Rio Foltz P L L C for prosecution legal services.
Second.
Motion in a second, council. Any questions you might have of Aaron in regards to the prosecution side of the legal services contract? You see Councilmember Moran?
Just clarification. Wanted to make sure that it wasn't something I was reading wrong. You had said in this one that we're going from five year to one year. It, we are going from a one-year contract to a five-year contract, correct? Just like the other. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
So, uh, is there an estimate as to, so this is an annual, uh, fee somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty or sixty thousand dollars depending on which year we're looking at? Um, at least initially. What, how does that compare to what we've paid on average year, maybe over the past five years? Do we have that answer? I mean, I'm not, you don't.
Yeah, we were paying. I can't sit here and do math, but we were paying, uh, three thousand, uh, eight hundred and seventy-five per month currently. And so I think the difference this year comes to about twelve thousand difference.
All right, that's, that's what I was looking for is just a comparison as to which way we're going and how far. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yeah, so that twelve thousand was what we voted on previously, right, in, uh, eight C?
Yeah, so in the.
But are you saying that was just, that's just going to be for this year additional legal fees? What about next year? I mean, it's.
Uh, yeah, that'll be the, the change, I believe, in both years. I think when I, if I did my math right, if not, you'll hear from me later, but uh, no, we, because in the, in the budget, uh, this year, we had actually, in the one oh five fund, we'd already escalated some a little bit, so uh, even though his contract didn't when we went through, so I went through and compared to what was budgeted versus what, uh, this line item was going to be in it with the increase, and that was the difference.
Because I do see that here, the previously budgeted shows a hundred and six thousand eighty-eight dollars, and so you're proposing that we need twelve thousand seven hundred to accommodate the increase that's outlined in this section.
Uh-huh, and that's for both years, so that's twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay, so that makes more sense now because I was kind of thinking, how can seventeen hundred additional dollars a month next year only be twelve thousand seven hundred dollars for both years? So if you're saying that we'd already budgeted more originally, that helps me understand why it's only twelve thousand seven hundred.
Else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Foltz and Rio, you're back in business. Congratulations. No one finished business or new business this evening, and again, we have no one in person, and I see nobody virtually. Anybody joined us, Amy, virtually?
No, they have not.
Our citizen public comment for the final one this evening. With that, we'll move on to staff, council, comments, reports, and senior staff. You have something? We'll start at Chief Grego's side of the bench.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So tonight, I'll start off with our Fourth of July report, um, for stats. Um, I'll give the date because I'm reporting June twenty-eighth through July fifth. I'll give the date. I'll give you the calls for service for fireworks next, the number, then I'll give you the total calls for service for that twenty-four hours, not firework related. So I'll start with June twenty-eighth. Uh, there were three. And total call for service, forty-seven. June twenty-ninth, two. And total calls for service, thirty-six. Thirty June was four. And thirty-three calls for service total. First of July, five, with forty-five calls for service total. Uh, July second was seven with thirty calls for service. July third was five with twenty-seven calls for service. July fourth, nineteen and sixty-one. July 4th, 19 and 61 calls for service that night. Or that day. Uh, July 5th was 12 with 51 calls for service. From what I understand, talking to the fire department, because I wanted to make sure I had the good report, not just from the department, there was two small fires in the city that night. Um, I believe from the story from I was told by Chief Carlisle. Uh, one was a bush that started a bush on fire, and I believe the second was a bush that actually set a portion of a field on fire. Um, one, from what I understand is related to fireworks and the other one was not. So I just wanted to share everybody know. One citation was given, uh, during that timeframe. Again, you guys know, we have to see this or have somebody be able to say, I saw it myself. That was Thomas Grego. And then they could do the statement and send it forward for, you know, the citation. One citation was given, so obviously an officer did see it, was able to, 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 uh, write it up. Um, warnings, which means that when I, when I inquire about this meant. They got in the neighborhood, the neighbor couldn't tell maybe who that was, but they know it came from that house. So they still knocked at the door and said, stop shooting them. So those are the type of warnings I'm talking about. And there was a total of nine during that week given to citizens. Um, anonymous reports, um, two different categories as a total of 10, and then contacts made, but no observation. And assisted the reporting party, which means again, they said, yeah, that it came from that house, um, was 22. So, um, the officers were out there trying to do their due diligence with enforcement, but, um, is there any questions about that before I move on?
Yeah, very quick. What was the second number in the column that you gave us? The date, the what and the number of calls?
Okay, the date, then the, the calls for firework calls, and then the last one was calls for service for the whole 24 hours.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll move on. Um, in your packet tonight, you'll see there's a crime stat report that we're going to start giving out to, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure. So for instance, for the 28th, the three calls for fireworks, are those included in that total of 47 calls or are they separate from the 47 calls?
They're included.
Okay, thank you.
Total calls for service.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, in your packet tonight, you'll see a stat, stat report for crime. As you guys, as the council is probably aware, we changed over to Tyler last year. The mayor had come to me and said, hey, chief, we used to give out stats to the city council. I said, mayor, I'm, I wasn't confident. I was getting good numbers at the time. Numbers have been justified. Things are looking good. So the city, I just wanted to let you know that that report tonight that you have, um, or you should have in your packet. If you see that blacked out stuff, that's because some of this, the Tyler report is not classified the same as it was in ILEADS. So we're going to start now and start making those numbers happen as we go along. The, and, um. I was asking Stacy basically, can we go back and do stuff? It would literally be bean counting. And that would take hours and hours and days. I'm like, no, let's not do that. Let's give good numbers. Obviously we have to report to the state. Make sure our numbers are right. And then, um, so I'm going to just let you know monthly, I'll be giving those out and you guys will be getting monthly updates on that from here on out. I received a report from the Washington Association of Police Chiefs and sheriffs, um, in reference our crime for 2022. Some of the highlights from the actual PowerPoint presentation that they presented. Um, that I, I pulled out of there myself was overall violent crimes in Washington state. I'll talk about west in a little bit, but everything here is Washington. Um, violent crimes is up 8.9%. Um, crime has increased 8.5%. Vehicle thefts were up 34.1%. The number of Washington State Law Enforcement Commissioned Officers fell from 11,231 in 2020. To two, to 10,736 in 2021. And then it dropped to 2,066 in 2022. 70 officers less in Washington state now. So last year, when I told you the numbers. And I, it fell from the 1.38 it was last year, if you remember right, down to now 1.36 officers per thousand in the state. So that's, that's unfortunate news. Um, again, um, the national average for the United States of America. Is 2.31 and that's on the report also. So I'm reporting from what they, for what they say. Again, following the trend from 2021, Washington state is the least police state in the union in the U.S. So I just wanted to repeat that also. Murders in 2020 was, uh, 302. In 21, 325. Last year, 394. So we're up. It's spiking. Murders are up. And again, Washington state. This is unfortunate, steep growing trend, um, in the last three years, but I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of this. Officers assaulted was up from 1,600, I'm sorry, 1,968 in 2021 to 2,375 in 2022. Um, here's the good news. Let's talk about West Richland. So in 2021, West Richland crime would drop, the crime rate dropped 29.7%. In 2022, um, it dropped another 9.3. So that's good news for the city. Um, out of the crimes though, that was we reported, I just want, do want to tell you though, that theft, theft of vehicles. Um, and narcotic violations were up on that, on that chart, um, or on that report. And last but not least, I just wanted to remind everyone, National Night Out, on a good news, a good note, um, National Night Out is a flat top part on August 1st from 5 to 8 p.m. Uh, this event is an opportunity to come out and meet with the West Richland Police Department team, eat some free food, free toys, including bikes. Um, and all kinds of fun for the family. A lot of businesses and organizations donated time and money to help out, make this night happen for the community again this year. And I really want to say thank you to everybody that has joined and helped us, um, and please come out and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Chief, the, uh, well, that was a 130-some page report that, that you shared with me.
Yes, sir.
Would you also, if you have it in front of you, share the, uh, uptick in our sister cities, please? It was a rather lengthy report, so thank you for sending that to me. I can come back to you.
Okay. I'll look for it, Mayor, but I'll just tell you off the top of my head, I believe Richland, Pasco and Kennewick were above 20% increases. If I remember right, there was nobody below 20% increase in crime. Thank you. Here's the email. Okay. So Pasco was up 21.2% this year. Kennewick was up 25.2, and I apologize, Richland was up 17.3. It wasn't quite 20. So that's, that's the actual report.
Hold it up too. I had your back.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and West Richland again was 9.3 below. I mean, so, you know, crime rates are down.
I'm sorry, could you read those again?
Okay, Pasco was up 21.2. Kennewick was up 25.2 and Richland was up 17.3.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for what you and your team do. It's a true testimony of, of the commitment you have with the people that are in blue, men and women.
Thank you, sir. And I'll share that with the team.
Add on to them.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of the chief? Yes, council member smart?
Yeah, chief, that's, that was an excellent report. Thank you very much. Appreciate all those numbers. Um. Uh, do we know with the theft that happens in West Richland? Roughly what percentage of those crimes are perpetrated by people who are residents of this city?
I have never ran those stats. Um.
I, I just wonder if we're being killed by outsiders. We have our own crime problem here.
Mr. Smart, unfortunately, sometimes we don't catch those thefts either. I mean, they're just reported, right? So, so that's going to be a difficult number to try to produce, but I will tell you historically, um, in my career. There are trends that go like the vehicle prowls have happened in my career. Let's say a 20 happened at night, we end up catching them there out of another city. I won't pick on a city tonight. So those things do happen, but, um, anyway, yeah, it's the best I got.
Thought about the fact that we haven't actually identified all of the thieves, right? We do as best we can.
They have nice cars in West Richland. Council member Moran?
Thank you, chief. I really appreciate the numbers, especially seeing that our police force has been doing so well at making sure that our numbers haven't rise, haven't risen as much as others have. So appreciate all the work that the force does here. Pardon. On a, um, a little bit even more better note, seeing as it's, you know, we didn't have that much of an increase is also good. But on a better note, I'm also wondering, do we have any reports on Polar? And is there any way that if folks would like to meet Polar or maybe help with any of supplies for Polar or for the dogs that are currently at our police station? Is there some way that folks might be able to help out or meet them?
We're, we're doing really well with that right now. As far as the dogs at the police station, Polar's doing great. We've taken him to so much stuff. I just went and spoke to, um, a boys and girls club, uh, this week. Polar went with me along with some of the team. So. No, Polar's been out in the public. If the public wants to meet Polar, he'll be out at National Night Out. So come on down. I mean, I guarantee he's going to be a big hit. Um, no, we get him out there as much as we can. Right now, supplies for him is great. Um, if you saw the, um, his swear in, you know, we have things for life for him. So no, things are good. I appreciate you asking. Uh, recently we asked the public for help on a automatic feeder because some of us double feed. Anyway, um, they, we got the money in overnight almost. I mean, it was just that fast. So thank you for asking though, but no, things are good. And, um. Let's hope that the other situation with the puppies that we pick up out there and stuff, you know, we're doing fine with all that stuff. So, but we'll, we'll let, we'll let everybody know if we need more help.
Excellent. Sounds good. I, I, um, I personally volunteer to walk dogs to the shelter. So I know that the numbers, the shelter, Tri-City Animal Shelter has gone down much. More than it has been in recent months. So I don't know if we've been shifting towards more animals being able to spend less time since it's only what 72 hours or the length of time until the shelter opens is normally what it would be?
Yeah. So Marissa, I can't say enough about her. She finds, she finds the owners. She does fantastic work. So we don't have to move many dogs over to the shelters. And it's all, I, I don't have the stats in front of me, but I'll tell you, she does magnificent. So I'm, I'm glad to hear the numbers are down too, because that was, that was a concern of hers for our, for our citizens also.
Thank you.
While Polar is well-equipped and has everything you need, the only thing that the, the officers and staff might need is some sticky rollers for Polar's hair because he is, he is very, very fluffy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move on to Roscoe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll just give council a quick update on our three construction projects. So Bobber Range, uh, Keen Road Intersection, they switched traffic. So this, they're moved traffic to the south so they can construct the north half. They're doing the north half, half at a time. So they're on the Cadillac side. So just report that's still on schedule for a October completion. Um, our SR224 water sewer project started this week. And so there's been stuff on Facebook. There'll be some road closures and detours. Uh, those start on Monday, the 24th. So be prepared. It won't be too bad. People, they're going to close sections of Van Geese and detour them down Keene or Paradise or Rupert. So, um, a lot of, a lot of crossings. And so this will help expedite the work there. And then North 62nd Water Main Replacement Overlay down there by Tapto Elementary again is still on schedule for mid-August completion. It'll be real close whether we get it done. They're trying to get it done right before school starts. Uh, if you want more details, you'll have to, uh, catch Kona on Thursday morning at 8:30. I'll be on there giving a more detailed update on that. And then utility committee, uh, we're going to have a busy end of year. Um, yeah, we'll be doing some, uh, rate model. Uh, things are coming up for all the utilities. So stormwater, irrigation, water and sewer. Think the first one up will be stormwater. So look for that to get scheduled soon. Uh, we're also in the middle of updating our wa, general water system plan and our general sewer plan. So those will start coming out too, uh, for, um. So you don't get an eight-inch, uh, binder of material to look at at the end. We're going to try to break it up by chapter, something more manageable to review as it goes along. So. Uh, utility committee will be busy between now and the end of the year going through those plans.
Thank you, Roscoe. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor Gary, uh, members of the council. So. The report I've got is the survey results are in, uh, senior staff looked those over today with our consultant. Next week, we're going to have a workshop with the council at 5 o'clock. So it's, uh, July 25th at 5 p.m. Mark that on your calendars. Uh, where our consultant will be presenting all of the results and details to, to you. Also, we've received a zoning code text amendment. As you probably heard, I sent an email out to you this last week about, uh, allowing cannabis retail in the city of West Richland. The planning commission has had a discussion at the last, uh, meeting, and they're going to be holding a public hearing at their August meeting. Um, and I will be updating council as we move along, um, and I'll do that via email. So keep an eye on your emails and I'll keep you updated with that.
Thank you. All right. Move on to council comments. Any of this evening? Council member Moran?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say that, uh, I was not able to attend the last meeting because I was at the Association of Washington Cities Conference. It was in Spokane. There was a lot of good information that was put out there, and I highly recommend to the other council members and to staff. To look on AWC's page and see if there's any trainings there, especially for the, uh, CML, the Certificate of Municipal Leadership Trainings. Because they've got some really great information on there. We're able to get most of it for free or low cost, and Stephanie would be able to set you up for anything if it does cost anything. Um, other than that, I will say that the meeting that we had for Forbidden Franklin Council of Governments on the 16th, it went really well. Um, not a whole lot of note. We discussed the, uh, the Kennewick, Pasco, Richland urban boundary, which unfortunately is the name of our urban boundary for our area. Uh, that's a federal name, but, uh, we were able to get that going. We should hopefully by the end of the year. Or maybe beginning of next year, see voting on the executive board members for Forbidden Franklin Council of Governments based off of our new rules. And we have some more things coming up. Our next meeting for Forbidden Franklin Council of Governments is this Fri- this Friday. It is a hybrid meeting and it starts at 10 a.m. So the 21st to 10 a.m. For anybody would like to join from the public or staff. Thank you.
Council member Phil?
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, for National Night Out, we will be moving some of the booths to the lower level, try to stay in the shade a little bit. Um, the big trucks be up top. We're going to move the tables and the food and, uh, some of the, the booths down lower. And then I will be out of town for the workshop. I just emailed Stephanie. I thought I told her before, but to be safe. I just emailed Stephanie and she's out of office until the 24th. So just to put it record, I will be gone for Tuesday, 25th. I met with Eric last week to go over the results of the survey.
Being done, we will go ahead and adjourn that meeting, this meeting at 6:48 this evening. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.